Is the video on? Somebody was messing with the whole thing up here, so I'm trying to figure it out.
It sounds like the microphone.
I just turned, I just turned the microphone on, but, but the camera settings were wrong, so I, I apologize. We are gonna have Mr. Chair add an update from the assessor after public input or after consent agenda, after county employee recognition. The same update that a couple of you got at the Hubbard County Township Association last night, but I wanted everyone to hear it. And then I have an item eight B to add to administrator, an update on the auditor treasurer position.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
All right, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, motion carried. We have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, public input?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public input. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak? Right, seeing no one. Then we will move on to the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Employee recognition. Mike?
Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
For employee recognition today in the county attorney's office, Anna Emeralding, Assistant County Attorney, is recognized for service from June seventh, two thousand twenty-one to March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Seth Kaiser, Assistant County Attorney, is recognized for service from February thirteenth, two thousand twenty, to March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. In highway, Alfred Opsel, Maintenance Two, is recognized for twenty years of service on March seventh, two thousand twenty-five. And in the sheriff's office, Darcy Ganyan, Deputy Sheriff, is recognized for service from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, to March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. John Schuster, Security Recreational Officer, is recognized for service from December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, to March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And Michael Holman Jr., Dispatcher Jailer, began the part-time position on March fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Great, thank you.
Also, we have workplace safety award recognition. Every year, the Minnesota Safety Council and its partners recognize and celebrate employers throughout the state of Minnesota for safety and health excellence in protecting our workplaces from injuries, illnesses, and incidents. The Hubbard County Safety Committee nominated Road and Bridge, Law Enforcement Center, Solid Waste and Recycling, and Revenue. Criteria for receiving an award include implementation of the minimum required elements of a safety health management system, not experiencing any disqualifying criteria within the previous three full calendar years, and an incident rate that exceeds the state and/or national average for your corresponding industry, industries during the most recent year period. This year for achievement in two thousand twenty-four, Hubbard County Road and Bridge has been selected to receive the Silver, Silver Achievement Award, achieving an incidence rate better than the fiftieth percentile of both the state and national average for its industry. And Hubbard County Revenue has been selected to receive the Bronze Achievement Award, achieving an incidence rate better than the fiftieth percentile of either the state or national average for its industry. Award winners will be honored at the opening session of the two thousand twenty-five Minnesota Safety and Health Conference, May fifth through sixth, two thousand twenty-five, held at Mystic Lake Center.
Okay, thank you.
We do have representatives today with us from the Highway Department. If you'd come up and, Mr. Kirin, if you had presented.
No, she hasn't.
On behalf of them. We'll have you come right over here, Eric. And Andrea, and then we'll have Steve. And who wants to hold the, we'll have you stand right here. Face the mic, right? And just snogging a little bit of your shoulders right behind there. He's the pro. Very good. Thank you for diligence. That's awesome. And that's it for those. Jeff, could we have you come forward? And Gina and Bobby, oh, and say, would you come up and receive for?
Yeah, she said he did.
Nope. All right, Bobby.
Unlocked paper scissors didn't work downstairs.
No, no. Very good.
Tell people in front.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Put it on the counties I love me walk.
And Mr. Chair, along the same vein, I would just recognize that Corey Gimble dropped off a certificate of recognition from Itasca Tour Outdoor Club. They had the open house on March first, and they're recognizing the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners for their work in supporting that grant and their projects, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So with that done, we will move on and have Maria.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
It wasn't like for you to introduce me. Sorry, I was just like not paying attention. Good morning.
Good morning.
So just wanted to try to give a quick update on kind of county averages of what we did for rate increases as well as like where we're at for the mailing. So our outsourcer, I believe, is set to mail our valuation notices and our tax statements this Friday on March twenty-first. So which should give taxpayers plenty of time to get them prior to our local board meetings. We tried really hard this year to give them more time than we have in the past. So those are set to go out on Friday. If they are done sooner than that, they said that they would give me a heads up, so they could be mailed sooner than Friday, but our deadline for them was Friday, so.
Okay.
And then as soon as we know that most people are receiving those notices, then we probably will switch on the website so that it shows the most recent information. Right now, we feel like it's confusing if they don't know, if they don't have the paperwork in front of them to know what year they're looking at. So we're waiting until we know that they actually have those new notices prior to switching that. So that probably will happen, I would guess sometime next week, that it would get updated. So a few things, just as a reminder, and we'll go over this again, like, once we get ready for county board and stuff. But Hubbard County did receive time trends again this year. If you guys remember, time trends are basically what the state considers kind of like the great equalizer because you have a twelve-month sale study. They try to predict what each of these properties would sell for on January second, which is our assessment date. And so by doing that, they look at, they look at the market, they look at the appreciating, like, what sale prices are doing. They look at sales that have happened more than once in the same sale study, different things like that, to determine what these rates should be. We've received these probably for the last four or five years, and they've always been double digits. Every year, they seem to be getting down closer to what just a normal, I don't know, five percent type of thing would be, so that's good to see. So our off-water properties range from a six-point-eight to a nine-point-two. On-water properties, we're at nine-point-four to a twelve-point-one. And then our large tract of land, or our bare land, again, did receive another time adjustment. It was at sixteen-something, and we got it down to thirteen. So it, it's still there, but it's not quite, quite as high as it was. So for, I would say, averages, just so that we kind of know, non-agricultural land, so your first five acres in general countywide saw about a ten percent increase per acre. And then acres that are five and over saw about a fifteen percent increase countywide. For ag land, last year, if you guys remember, they got hit pretty hard with twenty-six to forty percent increases. Our dry tillable was at about a five percent countywide, irrigated went up five percent. Our pasture and our grasslands went up about ten percent. So much less than last year, but still, we were low when we looked at those large tracts of land. Even with the large increases that we had last year, we had twenty-three, twenty-five sales, I apologize, of those large tracts of land, which, again, when we say that, is thirty-four and a half acres or greater. And our starting ratio on those was eighty-seven percent, even after the large increases last year. So land is still selling for a lot more than what we have on it. We did increase our exempt wetlands and our waste acres. Those went up thirty-three percent, which seems really high, but it went from nine-hundred to twelve-hundred. So when you get those smaller numbers, your percentages are much higher, but those also increased. On-water properties, we went, Lakeshore went up probably on average fifteen percent. There were a few lakes that went up significantly higher than that. But for, like I said, county average, we're at about fifteen. Rivers went up about seven percent countywide. As far as improvements, so again, when I talk about improvements, I don't mean new stuff that you did to the property, but I'm looking at anything that's not bare land. So that would be your house, decks, patios, porches, garages, pole barns, all of that stuff. That's what we consider improvements. Those did receive a building rate increase. It's probably gonna be, averages out to be about seven to ten percent for properties. So just ease of numbers, if your house was valued at a hundred dollars a square foot last year, you're gonna be at around a hundred and seven to a hundred and ten this year. So it is a rate per square foot. Everyone saw the same increase, but everyone's impact is different, just depending on how large your houses, stories, all of, there's so many factors that go into it. So that is kind of generally what we did. I did give you a few handouts. So we did, I did submit our live file. We also were able to get our abstract or our PRISM report in, which is due April one. We were able to get that submitted several weeks early, which is, feels really good to finally be able to be back on, like, on track. And so because of that, I was able to get my final ratios already from the state. So we did not, I'm in compliance on everywhere that I need to be, and that is what is reflected on the sheet right here for you. So you'll see the different columns. There's one that has the two thousand twenty-four starting ratio, so that's where we started at. And then the very far right column is where we ended at. Again, just for, because this stuff is, makes sense to me, six or more sales is where we have to fall within that median ratio of ninety to a hundred and five percent. So you will see some ratios that are either below or higher than that. However, that's that six to, or more sales that we have to look at. So that just breaks it down countywide, and then as far as every township, what we had for sales, number of sales on water, off water, and moves it all into that. The other handout that I have is this colored one like this. So this is something that we do, just because it's, I like it for a visual. It basically breaks down the county for you, and it tells you what land is selling. On the one side, it tells you what land is selling for countywide. We did, we started doing this several years ago, just because sometimes when you don't see it in a visual, it's hard to know what neighboring lands are selling for, and there were some pretty big discrepancies on them. And so this is just a good visual to see that it makes sense. This also has to do with your sales too, so yes, there could be some differences, but we also have to follow what market is doing in those areas.
Maria?
Yeah?
What does NBHD stand for?
Where are we looking at? Oh, I'm sorry, neighborhood. Neighborhood factor.
Okay.
So on the backside, that is actually something new. I had a couple of my local assessors say it'd be really nice to know what your neighborhood, or, so that'd be your improvement side, what are neighborhoods in the surrounding counties? On-water is a little bit hard, just because of all the lakes, so we do that a little bit different. So this is all of your off-water neighborhoods. What are the neighborhood factors, as well as commercial factors? We did try to even those out a little bit this year, because those were all over the board. Again, when you don't visually see it, it's kind of, and with your outlier, your rural commercial properties, most of those neighborhoods should be very similar versus like in the city of Park Rapids, where you have multiple commercial sales every year. So those are just visuals to kind of give you an idea. This green, what's with the green paper? This is an insert that is going to go out to every taxpayer. That will be going out with our valuation notices and our tax statements. We're trying something a little bit different this year. Basically, valuation notices, if you guys remember in years past, were always printed on colored paper. With our new outsourcer, that kind of went away. We're going back to that, just because I think it's a little bit easier and it draws your attention, that it's not the tax statement twice, that there is something different about that valuation notice. And then we tried to break it down to basically explain in the simplest of ways what, how we come up with estimated market values, what goes into that, our sales study. And then on the backside, how does that estimated market value then affect what my portion of taxes is going to be? Obviously, taxes is a very complicated thing, but we tried our best to at least give you just a general overview of how that works and what it looks like as far as, like, you know, when to appeal and different things like that. So we're hoping this will at least help a little bit. And then if it is successful, it's probably something that we'll look at doing most years, just to give people that background again, just to remind them of how our process works. And then the last thing that I have for you is just our local Board of Appeal and Equalization schedule, just so you guys know when all the meetings are. Those are starting on April eighth. We are, it took us about five weeks last year to do them. We're gonna try to, we're not, try. We are going to do them in three weeks this year. Trying to not have so much time in between meetings, because there was a lot of idle time. And so we have a pretty good schedule set up for that. And then our signup process should be live here coming up pretty quick, so people, once they get their notices, then they can sign up for those. And I guess there's a couple of lakes that I wanted to quick point out, just so if they're in your districts, you kind of know. We did have several lake sales that had, you know, three or four sales, but we had a couple that had several. Beltane, so that would be Henrietta and Neva Township in Neva City, they had six sales this year. Long Lake was the big winner. They had eleven sales in this last sale study. Eleven improved sales in this last sale study. Fish Hook, so that would be Henrietta, Todd, and Park Rapids, they had six sales. And then Potato Lake, I believe, Potato Lake also had six sales. So that would be your Arago, and Lake Emma is the majority of where those ones were. But we had several lakes with three or four sales, but those were kind of the big winners over five. So eleven and one sale study is, that's a lot of sales for, for Long Lake, so. Any questions for me, though?
Maria, the townships with open book, those residents have to call your office and make an appointment? Or is there a date set up for each?
So we're doing open books. I feel like every year, we tweak this a little bit, just to see if we can make it better. So this year, because we're doing all of our LBAEs in the month of April, we're giving them the entire month of May. So by state statute, we have to hear all appeals prior to May thirtieth, or May thirty-first, but that's a Saturday. So we are on their notice. They basically, as soon as they get it, they can call us anytime between when they get their statement and May thirtieth. But yes, our office handles the appeal, so typically, we put on the notice to have them call us. And a lot of times, we'll either talk to them if they want to set up an appointment for us to go out to their house to review everything, or if they want to come see us. It's kind of dependent on what they're looking for. We've done a lot of site visits for them, but we've done a lot of site visits in the last few years, so a lot of times, it's just people asking questions. So we're seeing if this format works. We did do it in a couple of townships last year, and that worked okay. But when you have multiple districts, it got confusing. People would hear something, they're like, wait a minute, what district are you talking about? So we're gonna see if this way works better, and, or we can maybe go back to trying to set up where this two-hour chunk is just for this township. We're always open to suggestions and trying to see if we can make it better, but.
At our annual township meeting, I was asked about it, because the notice says May first to May thirtieth. And I told him, basically what you said, well, I'm assuming you're gonna have to call the auditor's office and, or assessor's office.
You can call the auditor too, if you want. I would like to hear their one, so.
I gave him a cell number.
Yeah, give him a cellphone number. I like that. But yeah, no, normally, you know, a lot of times on your normal notice for your local boards, they tell you to contact, like, the local assessor first. A lot of times, if you have, a lot of times, I can look in the system and tell you what changed, but I can't tell you why. They maybe changed something if the local assessor was the one that made a change. But with open books, because we're technically the ones they're appealing to, it's just easier for them to talk directly to us. And a lot of times, if we do site visits, we include the local assessor, so we go out there together. But typically, they want us involved somehow, so it's not, it just, it's a different process, I guess. But no, you're correct. They, they technically can appeal as soon as they want to. But with how busy we're gonna be for the month of April, we're like, let's just try to keep it in the month of May, but they have the option to call us basically as soon as they get their notice, so.
Thank you.
Do you think your, both your and your staff's efforts to try to inform people more adequately about the whole process, do you think that's being successful at this point in time? Are you getting less of those types of questions?
I, I do think it's helping. No one is ever happy when their property values go up, right, unless you're trying to sell. But typically, people don't want their property values to go up. The best I can hope for is that you understand why I had to do something. You're probably still not going to like it, but if you can understand the why behind it, then I feel like, then we're successful in explaining it. But I do think that the more education we can give on the process does help. And it's hard to know who to get in front of and how to do it, but I think going to, like, the Township Association meeting, that helped last year a lot, just because even supervisors have a lot of questions about that stuff or misconceptions. We hear a lot, like, my value went up because my neighbor just built a two-million-dollar house, and they don't realize that has nothing to do with it, like, until that property sells, we don't care about, we don't care. So there's a lot of, like, misconceptions out there, I guess. So I do think even if you look at, in the last three years, the number of appeals that we've heard, the number is drastically going down too. And so I, I feel like it's being successful, could be wishful thinking. But our number of phone calls that we get every year, or even last year's boards compared to the year prior, were so much easier, like, people were way nicer, I guess. They've been rough the last couple of years, but I think people are finally starting to understand more of the process. They're noticing what the market is doing, so I do think it's helping, and I guess we'll just keep trying. So the more education you can get, it just, this stuff makes sense to me, but before I started here, I didn't know any of this stuff either. So I mean, that's all about education, so.
I was just gonna say, we had improvements to our place. I've known our local assessor for years and years, so when he came out, we just carried on a conversation. But I would encourage people to have conversation with their local assessors, because there's snow on the ground. He thought our driveway was actually paved. It was not. So that was a conversation we could have, and then he could have the correct information when he figured out. So just little things in conversation can come up that can alleviate problems even for your office for adjustments.
Correct, and that's why a lot of times, we encourage you to contact the local, just because we are human, and you, if you, you have to make, you are allowed to make extraordinary assumptions on things. So if you're not able to get inside, but you see window wells, you're going to assume they have a finished basement because of what you see. So it, I think some people are scared to let the local assessor in, but sometimes it is to your benefit too, because otherwise, they have to assume, if you just recided your house and painted everything, it looks brand new, but you've done nothing inside, they're going to assume that the inside matches the outside. And so those are things that we want to hear about, and those are things, that's the time to appeal then, if you know that something's wrong. Just because the market, or you don't like your value, or everyone's values went up, unfortunately, that's not a reason to appeal. Those are the factual changes or things that we're looking for, that we actually can make a difference in, so, absolutely.
AMC said that it's becoming a factor now for safety for assessors. Have you, have you experienced that in Hubbard County?
Yes, very much so. We have several of our locals that have been threatened and basically run off with guns, and so we let the sheriff know, but it is, it is definitely becoming more and more of an issue. I know that they're working on it, and I think the biggest thing that they're looking at too is, I mean, it is one of the, it's one of the professions where, like, you encourage people to go inside people's houses, which, I mean, no other profession do they encourage you to step inside people's houses. And so I do think that that's one thing that they're looking at, is should people be doing interior inspections when it's just you? You know, and our locals are pretty smart about it. I know, like, your local, if he, he does in town, and so if he's home, and there's only small children, or the wife is home, he, like, he's like, I'm, I'll just ask you questions from the door. So it's things that you wouldn't really have to worry about. I think pretty much we've been fairly safe up here, but I do think that the more years that go on like this, where we're seeing more increases and people are getting more stressed about things, I do think it's gonna become an issue. And so I'm, I appreciate that they're looking at assessor safety. It does make us think too, when we go out, because this isn't something that our office does normally, but we've been doing a lot more of it. And so a lot of times, we tell, go out with two people, or let us know where you're going, so that we kind of have an idea of, if something happens, we at least know where to try to find you. So, but we're, I do appreciate that they're looking into it. So I would guess that there would be changes, that maybe interior inspections would not be a thing anymore for safety purposes. The other thing that surprises me a lot, that I don't know if I quite understand, is we have a lot of people that stick their dogs on the local assessor. And I just don't understand that, or, like, the dog is, like, trying to, like, we had one of our locals get bit by two dogs, and, like, I, I struggle with that a little bit, because the property owner was home and he didn't want to call him off. So I, that, that's a little hard for me, but, so then, I mean. You know, so anyway, but yeah, it's, it's definitely something that's gonna become more obvious. And I know the Sheriff Akis has asked us to do a couple of different things with our locals. So I'm in the works of trying to do that, like, getting magnets for their cars, so that they know when you show up that it's someone from the assessing office. So I'm working on getting those in place. You know, a lot of, it, the world of assessing has changed with people's cameras a lot, because you see people walking on your property, and you don't quite know what it is. So just most of our locals, or every one of our locals, has county ID badges that we gave them, so at least it's something that they can show the cameras. But yeah, it's just, it's definitely changed the way we do our work, for sure.
This week, I read an article, there's five states that are looking at doing away with property tax, because people are struggling to stay in their homes. What was interesting about the article is they hadn't come up with solutions to how to make up the revenue, so. We'll see how that goes.
Well, and I know North Dakota just voted on it too, and it didn't pass, but I was like, oof, okay.
But they, but they didn't have an alternative either.
Nope, and that's the problem. Like, it sounds great, you know what I mean, but, yeah, so. But yeah, any other questions for me?
Thanks for your great work.
I'm sure you're gonna, I'm sure you're gonna get called, so at least we wanted to make sure you know. But pass them to us, we're ready for them, so. And then board meetings start soon, so you're welcome to come see what we do. So, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, natural resources.
Hey, morning. Let's see what we got first here. We have, I have three things on the agenda. First one is to review and approve twelve tracts of timber to be sold at an April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five timber auction. The twelve tracts contain ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-six cords at an estimated appraised value of two hundred and eighty-nine. There it is, the, the appraised value is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents. So it'll get bid up from that, that base price. We're still seeing pretty good timber, timber prices across the region, so I'm hoping, hoping for the best. This is kind of a slow time of year for loggers with the wet ground, so. Let's hope they're, they want to stockpile, stock some sales in their, their file cabinet for when things get better, but. And then this'll be the second out of the four auctions to be held in two thousand twenty-five. Just looking for approval to sell the, the twelve sales tracks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Great, motion carried.
Thanks. That one's right by your house too, I think.
Yes, thank you for marking the west.
Yeah, are you gonna complain, because, you know, you can see too far?
I've been there thirty-two years, and they've logged to the south, you know, clear cut and everything. To me, it's, it's county land, and it's gonna be managed. I approve of it.
For the most part, it does benefit wildlife, and our foresters are pretty good at leaving reserve trees and protecting sensitive areas, so. Yeah, then one part out of, you get out of it is, we work with the surveyor, and you get a nice, you know where your line's at, so. The next item I have is the yearly planting quote for, for this year. Thomas Forestry had the lowest quote out of Bemidji, Minnesota, to plant seven, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five containerized seedlings on ninety acres. Thomas Forestry had the lowest quote out of Bemidji, Minnesota, to plant seven, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five containerized seedlings on ninety acres. This comes out to about eight hundred and seventy-two trees per acre. Um, it'll be a mix of pine and spruce, um, on ninety acres, so uh, it's uh, it's good to get a mix, not just one species, I think it's good to have a little biodiversity, so. Looking to get that low quote from Thomas Forestry approved at seventy-two sixty per thousand trees planted.
Is that a new, a new company or you've used them before?
Yep, we've used them the last couple of years. Yep, they used to have a different name a couple of years ago, and then I believe the daughter branched out from her, her dad, and um, this is her business.
Cory, what's the survival rate if it's a summer or drought?
Um, so containerized seedlings actually do pretty good, um, they have the nice um, sod or uh, soil actually on them already, so they, it seems like they survive a little better than bare root. Um, just because they have that soil and the root growth within that soil already. Um, so it's, it's pretty good for containerized.
Do you know how big the containers are, how many cubic inches are the containers?
Um, so. Yeah, it's, it's probably about six to nine, I suppose, yep. They're two-year-old. Yep, I believe they're two-year-old trees, so, yeah, they, they usually do pretty good for us. Um, of course you have to take care of the, the weeds and stuff that grow around them and.
Do they get them from the Bedara Nursery, do you know, or do they?
I think they are gonna eventually plant some of those, and we um, definitely give them input. We'll, we'll definitely purchase from you if you wanna start doing containerized seedlings. Um, you know, we get the low quote from you, we'll.
And if it's a good product?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
It's the main thing, we want success.
Yeah, that's true, yep, yep.
So if you put it in the ground and it dies right away, well.
Yep, we don't wanna replant three times. It gets to be expensive.
It's expensive and time consuming.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this more quotes than we normally get?
It's about pretty similar, it's, it's.
I know sometimes there's only like one or two quotes.
Yeah, last year.
Have four.
It, it depends on if it's bud capping, um, like bud capping, we might only get two quotes. But for planting crews, there's actually quite a few planting crews out there. Um, it's the, it's the bud capping and other types of um, things that we need to do to our trees that we get less quotes, spraying, that sort of thing.
I'll move to approve the local.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any, any more discussion?
Uh, just one more question, so do they plant this using machines, they don't do this by?
Oh, they use uh, like hand spades.
They do.
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty amazing what they can do in a short amount of time.
And the, that one from Oregon, they must've been figuring mountains to climb.
That's what I, I asked Jake, I said, what's that all about? Well, we try to send them a quote every year, and they never give us two, a very cheap, cheap quotes.
All right, we have motion and a second, so all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Right, motion carried.
Right, thank you. Yep, you guys ever wanna come out and check it out sometime?
Yeah, you try to keep up with them when they're planting.
Sure, yeah, you probably did.
Our research trees are all containers.
Wow, yep, huh, interesting. All right, the next thing is a, it's a, I don't know, a pretty big deal we got going on. We, we, if you haven't heard, we have the, the grant from uh, Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails. Was fully executed with, with the exception of uh, ground disturbance. Um, which uh, which it'll, the exception will go away once the archaeology work's done, hopefully soon. Um, so we can still, we can still do site design, survey work, engineering, road engineering, drainage engineering. Uh, parking lot design, sign, signs, we can put signs up. Um, so there's, there's some stuff, good stuff that we can still get done with, with the exception of the archaeology work, or the, the ground disturbance. Um, SRF, we've been working with since this, this project started. Um, they gave us a, a quote to complete the design work for the road, the parking lot. The signage, the drainage, the electrical work. The uh, just to get things going, the, all the survey work and design. Um, they, they based it all on one quote, which is seventy-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, and this'll provide the, the engineering work and uh, design for the phase one part of that. Uh, I just wanna. So in the grant budget, design and engineering, there's a hundred fifty-one thousand. And part of that a hundred fifty-one thousand will be all this. And then another, another part of that will be to design and do the archaeology work on the, the trailhead building, so. Um, there's definitely a lot of leeway, or a lot of movement still, if we do spend that seventy-three thousand. Um, so I think it's a pretty fair quote to, to get this started. Um, they said they could start in mid-April. And um, we're on their, on their calendar to get going, so. Um, just looking to get this approved and get, get the project going finally.
And I would just comment that before, uh, when we knew this was happening, I had talked with Jed and Jeff about their ability to um, do the engineering for this project, and with the amount of volume that they had going on, um, they said they wouldn't have time. Um, so uh, it made, it made sense to bring somebody else on board to do this. And, and the, the, this final quote from SRF is actually lower than their previous quote for this work.
Yeah.
So it'll have the parking lot marked off, is that part of it?
Yep, the parking lot will be, um, they're gonna design that and put all the markings and um, for when we finally construct it. And then they're gonna mark the, all the utility lines and where utilities need to be too, so. Um, it's definitely something that's very needed in the beginning of the project, so it's good to get, good to get started on it anyways.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'm, I'm over to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right, thank you, and we did receive forms, so when we do pay for something, we uh, just send in a form and they reimburse us pretty quick, so.
Any, any more forward moving, movement on the archaeological?
They say they can start here in April too, when the ground thaws a little bit, but the, the snow didn't help out too much. Hopefully we get some good weather.
Well, a little bit of rain would help take the frost out, and we'd get started a little sooner, so.
Yep, we have a lot of projects going on at our parks, so we could, we could use all the nice weather we could get.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Cory, I, I have one quick question, any land, any um, over the counter land sales since you had the auction?
Yep, we did, we sold one along Highway seventy-one, up north of Cabocona Corner. And then yesterday we got a call about one in Akeley that someone might be coming in and to buy one, so.
Okay, great.
So we might be down to ten out of thirty we had two years ago, so we're, we're dwindling down.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good week.
All right, so we'll move on to sheriff.
Troy, it's all you.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
So uh, what's on the agenda for today would be accepting and adopting the resolution for a two thousand and twenty-four hazard mitigation plan. That was conducted by the University of Minnesota Duluth and all the stakeholders here in Hubbard County. Can explain what the mitigation plan is, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, that would be fine.
So the hazard mitigation plan actually takes a look at um, Hubbard County's hazards. So they identify um, natural hazards that could be a problem in Hubbard County, so when we talk about Hubbard County, really it has to do with weather. Um, that, that is our main um, hazards from a mitigation standpoint. Um, and, and the twenty-four study basically was right in line with the two thousand and seventeen study. So the last time that study was done was two thousand and seventeen. Um, they're supposed to be done on every five years, but obviously we had COVID um, right at the five-year mark. And then our pipe, pipeline incident, so um, both the COVID and pipeline kinda delayed um, the study getting done. So that's why it was pushed out to two thousand and twenty-four. One thing that they did identify in the two thousand and twenty-four study that was different um, from the two thousand and seventeen is, is they ended up giving wildfire um, probability, setting it at high in Hubbard County. So they did recommend that Hubbard County um, implements an annex within um, our emergency operation plan specific to, to wildfires. So what I need to do is, I'll reach out to the DNR. And ascertain from them what it would take for them to do a study in Hubbard County identifying potential um, areas where wildfire could be an issue. Um, so they look at obviously our forest lands, private lands, how close they are to residents, um, you know. So, once I make contact with them and ascertain if there's a cost involved, obviously I'd have to come back to the board and, and present, you know, any costs that would be involved to, to have the, you know, DNR. Or if they recommend an outside agency to do this study. Um, and then work on developing the actual annex with the local fire departments. Um, and the DNR obviously, so that's the one thing that was identified that, that we need to work on um, in the county, so.
Okay, well, certainly overdue for an update, so it's nice to get this accomplished. And then since you're new at this position, I, I think it's a good experience for you to, to tackle this, so. All right, um, is there a motion to approve?
Um, for other possible hazards, are there any known chemicals that, like on railroads that come through Hubbard County?
Yes, so I mean, we, and we have annexes in place for those hazards. So obviously we have pipelines throughout, throughout Hubbard County. We have the one, you know, or a couple of different pipelines that run north and south. And then there's the pipeline that runs across, across Highway two through the northern part of the county. So they're all designated as hazards, um, we do have annexes in place, you know, for them. Otherwise, when chemicals, you know, from a hazard standpoint would be our, you know, local industries. Um, RDO is, is one that does have, you know, some hazards, um, our fertilization plants, so Senex, Co-op. One plus with the RDO though, that's probably the biggest one, um, not that the Co-op and Senex isn't. But RDO has their own CAT team, you know, certified uh, team to respond to an actual incident with their chemicals that they have out there, mainly the um, pneumonia is their biggest one. So if they had a leak with that, um, they would respond, you know, right away. I've talked with their safety committee a little bit since I was um, put into this position. Um, and uh, they take it seriously, they, they exercise, you know, at a minimum, at least three times a year with one full exercise um, out there, so they, they do take it very seriously, they can shut their systems down, which certainly helps when you have any type of leak. You know, and then they obviously know too, um, from a resource standpoint, if they cannot handle it through their locally um, CAT team. Um, they would obviously reach out to the county and through the state duty officer, and we could get another CAT team, you know, responding, so. There's ones near around here that would respond, Grand Rapids has one. Um, I think Moorhead even recently um, developed one, that's, I'm not positive on that, but I know Grand Rapids has one, so. Those are your biggest chemical ones though, so.
Any more questions? Great, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Right, motion carried.
Thank you, I'll just add to this, we have three cities that have to um, you know, participate in it, actually there was four. But Lepore didn't participate, so they were removed. Um, Akeley and Park Rapids already adopted um, resolutions accepting the plan. Neva says yet to respond, so we'll have to follow up with them and get them to adopt it, so.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, environmental services.
Good morning.
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 I've got two conditional use permits on my part of the agenda this morning. The first one is application one CU twenty-three by the Woodson Property Group. They were seeking a permit to operate a restaurant use on a lake property on the north side of Lake Baltane. There's an existing uh, non-conforming resort use on the property. This went to the planning commission. It's been a couple of years, and the planning commission, when they tabled it, directed the applicants to provide a lot of additional information that the planning commission felt necessary to be able to make a decision. That information wasn't supplied, uh, we sent a follow-up letter at the staff level to uh, let them know that we're still awaiting that, and that if we didn't receive it, it would be placed on the February planning commission meeting agenda for final action, which occurred and the planning commission recommended denial. One of the primary reasons for that is there was an accompanying variance application needed because the restaurant would have caused the property to further exceed its non-conforming status in regard to impervious surface area coverage, and the Board of Adjustment denied that variance. So since the restaurant use would be predicated on being able to further exceed that impervious surface area and the variance for that wasn't granted, uh, the county isn't able to approve a conditional use permit that relies on that variance having been approved. So I'm happy to give more background information on this one if you'd like. Uh, the applicants didn't attend the February planning commission meeting, so I haven't heard from them in several months.
Okay. Yeah, I read through a lot of it, and it, yeah, it just, there's a lot of information lacking that really need to be supplied in order to make a good decision, so.
I actually viewed the property whenever it was before the planning commission originally. The location was not um, a better location probably would've had better chances of moving forward. So I will um, make a motion to uh, go along with what the um, planning commission recommended, that is to do, just.
Deny the.
Deny it, yeah, and, and adopt the finding of fact.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, carry.
Okay, thank you. The next and last item that I have for you is another conditional use permit application. It's one CU twenty-five by the Mississippi Headwaters Audubon Society. And what they are requesting is a permit to have a semi-public use occur on the government lot. Which is one of many that they own, as they own all of the land around Spearhead Lake, uh, just southwest to Lake Plank Tangenet. This particular government lot is where all of their existing structures are located. The rest of the property in this government lot up to now is viewed as being a nature area, which is a permitted use in the ordinance, but with some additional things that they would like to do on this particular government lot, which involve adding another tent or a yurt for seasonal staff to occupy and others. Um, that doesn't really fit within the allowances for a nature area, but can under a semi-public use. Um, it's kind of a unique uh, use category in our ordinance, in that I don't recall ever running across another property that falls under the semi-public use. I reached out to the DNR for examples elsewhere in the state, and they weren't able to provide any. Uh, so I also conferred with legal counsel as to what to do, mainly in regard to the dwelling unit density. And counsel's guidance was that the county could use the existing dwelling unit density standards that apply to other uses as kind of a, a baseline uh, to determine what's fair. But ultimately, it would be the board's decision, which would be acceptable as to what you feel would be an appropriate dwelling unit density out there. Uh, currently that consists of a earth home that's been used historically by a caretaker on the property. Last year, they were permitted for a tent that they erected that functioned as a guest cottage. And now they would like to add a second tent-like or yurt structure, again, for staff use. And then for use by other outside parties, probably in the spring and fall primarily, just as a way to help generate a little bit of additional revenue to help with the operational expenses of the society. So the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application. They had six conditions that were recommended. None of them are anything beyond kind of the typical that you see. And the sixth condition involved requiring a compliance inspection on a outhouse that was identified on the property during the lot view. The applicants did provide us with that compliance inspection and it passed. So my recommendation would be if you are supportive of the application and the Planning Commission's recommendation that that sixth condition that they recommended could be dropped because it's no longer needed. And we do have Mr. Bessler here who represents the society, if you'd have any questions for him.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and to accept the findings of facts and the five conditions.
Good, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, that's all that I have, unless the board asks questions for me.
Where's your office at now?
First floor, and we are in the law library, and then the room right off to the west of the security checkpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Have a. Where the public can go to and get their permits and stuff, okay?
Yep, that's, it's cozy, but we'll make it work.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, on to Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item eight A is just updating and approving an update to the bylaws that add the language relative to remote meetings. And specifically that if we hold remote meetings, that we will operate, be a roll call vote. We had a conversation about this last week at the work session, and there was unanimous support for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws.
All right, Ted makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And this was the item that was added and handed out to you. We're working through the process with Clifton Larson Allen. One of their members is here on site today, working with the with the Finance Department. And I will be scheduling a meeting with the General Government Committee to review the the full report. But the preliminary findings in the full report is that R two, obviously, we're going to need to hire a department head for this department. And based on the preliminary findings, it makes sense to start that process now. So there are some recommendations that we might need additional staff in the Finance Department to pull off what we're what we're trying to accomplish. We've had conversations about that. I'm not planning on bringing any of that forward until it's been reviewed by the General Government and the whole report then is reviewed by the board. And then we would have to determine if we have the ability to do any of that in twenty-five or budget for it in twenty-six. But the position for auditor treasurer is currently in the budget. So the recommendation would be to approve the posting of that position and to extend the appointment of myself as the interim auditor. Yesterday was ninety days, it's already been ninety days, until that position is filled. So essentially, now we know we have a, we have a terminal timeline. The recommendation is to rehire that position. Essentially, as it is, the sorting and the splitting of responsibilities would be at the subsequent levels within that department. We weren't sure if we were going to recommend an auditor and a CFO or treasurer separate, but their preliminary recommendation is to hire the department head, much as we had it. And then do the sorting and the splitting down below in that organizational structure. So we'll have an opportunity to review that, but if we get started on this, we, the sooner we get started, the sooner we can find a candidate. So the motion, the motion I'd be asking for is to approve the posting of that position for the existing vacancy and extend the county administrator as interim county auditor until the position is filled. And then after that, a conversation about who would be interested in participating in the interviews when we get to that process for this position. We usually involve a commissioner or two at a department head level position, and this being an important one, I would want to do that as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
Is this going to be an open posting?
Yes, yep. Absolutely, a full, full, full search, posting on the McCaffo and AMC and locally, and yeah, a full, full posting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Oh, does that motion also include extending?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, to extend.
That was, that was part of his original statement.
That was the motion I asked for.
Yeah.
As he made the motion, was that your intention?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of brief updates from me is that tomorrow morning, Sheriff August and I will be on Coffee Talk on the Radio, talking about the jail project. Obviously, we started work yesterday. Just kind of a reminder that right now, the second floor is the construction area, people should stay out of it. If you need to be there, you'll need to be there with with construction staff or supervision and wearing a hard hat and have a reason to be there. So we're doing our best to support their work to work safely on our behalf. We did talk about in our planning on having a groundbreaking for the project, which is will be coinciding with us breaking ground on the expansion portion of that. And I think we're going to do that at the end of our board work session on May thirteenth, planning to do that at ten thirty. So after the work session, we'll actually go over to Front Street and have the ceremonial picture with the shovels and the and the hard hats. And ICS is coordinating that. But I think it's important to celebrate those milestones as we go along. I think those were the two updates that I had, unless anyone had questions about any of those projects for me. As I said, the the CLA report will bring through General Government, will probably call a special meeting because I'm not going to wait, want to wait till the middle of next month. And then bring it back to this board, full board for review, possibly at the at the April work session. Or even at the first meeting in April, depending on when we can schedule that General Government meeting.
Okay, well, thank you. There's nothing else for auditor, or for Administrator, we'll move on to committee reports. Who would like to start?
I'll start, I have a lot. But only from, I only actually had one meeting, that was MRC, but I'm going to start. Prime West, Jim, the CEO, sends out a weekly update about what's happening legislatively. Two things I just wanted to draw your attention to is, one, the the weight loss program for DHS and the increase it would be for the budget. So in two thousand and twenty-four, there was eleven million, or eleven point seven million dollars spent on the weight loss programs, on the drugs. By two thousand and twenty-seven, it's projected to grow to seventy-eight point seven million. And by two thousand and twenty-nine, it's projected to grow to eighty-seven point six million. So that would be an increase, in just four years, it would be an increase of seventy-six million dollars. And this is one concern even Prime West has for its, the people that they serve, is that more and more people are being put on this drug. A lot of them aren't being coached on life changes, and it costs the average person or the insurance companies fifteen hundred dollars a month per person. The second thing that came out in this report was that Governor Walz negotiated with the Native Americans the ability to go out off the tribal lands for cannabis sales. And so the retailers that have applied for licenses are questioning this because once they go off tribal lands, they can, they can start preparing for it. And they will be taxed at a different rate, and they won't be under local zoning laws. So more to come on that. Then, to the MRC meeting we had yesterday, I took several pictures of what was presented, so let me get those up. The key dates, let's see, if if Walz submits a supplemental budget, that will come up this week. March thirty-first is when the House Budget Resolution is due, April fourth is the first and second deadlines, which means all bills must be passed in both the House and Senate and all committees with jurisdiction over the bill. April eleventh is the third deadline, final deadline for all bills, including the omnibus bill with a financial component to be passed out of their relevant committees to Ways and Means of Finance. Easter break is April eleventh through the twenty-first. May nineteenth is the constitutional end of the session, and June thirtieth, the state fiscal biennium ends. They didn't talk about a special session in June, but they did make note that depending on what happens with the federal government and cuts, they might have to have a special session this fall. The budget forecasts, the budget forecast now is nearly six billion dollars in deficit for twenty-eight and twenty-nine. The twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium spending is expected to increase by seven hundred and ninety million dollars. The largest increases are coming from HHS, which is three hundred and thirty-eight million, and education, which is a hundred and ninety-eight million. Forecasters expect the labor market to remain tight, leading to wage growth, in part to baby boomers leaving the workforce and fewer international workers. I got like three or four more, hold on. MRC issues, positive, the SCORE bill had a good hearing in both bodies. The e-waste battery product stewardship was heard in the Senate. The Minnesota African Child Welfare, they're waiting on language from the reviser's office. And everyone is concerned about the cost of the program and then how to pay for the modernization of software. They talked about how legislatures were appalled at the software that HHS is using, including our own department. Transportation, the LGRWRP coalition, there is hurdle in the Senate, signs that chairs are threatening the purse, or tightening the purse strings. And then there's new requirements for assessment of greenhouse gas emission. Let's see, I think there's one more here. Yeah. And then MRC issues, the public water inventory, the DNR update. Staff has been hired for the update, but the DNR is not selecting counties to begin with or announce the official process. And then there's a bill HF two fifty-three, it's a PWI modifications pause definition tied to mapping. And then MRC and AMC testified in support of the bill this last week. And then there was a representative, Representative Schultz, Isaac Schultz, was there to talk to us. He is on environmental rules, fraud, and workforce. The public waters inventory was heard last week, the workforce paid medical, or paid family medical leave and earned safe and sick time. They're trying to figure out how to finance the long-term costs. One thing that Representative Schultz authored a bill to keep from stacking benefits is that would be an undue burden for property tax owners. They're trying to look at not making every employer do this. They would have a, you know, for the number of employees, if you have a few, you wouldn't have to do this. That's iffy. And they said more than anything, so it's going to impact the taxpayers and the cost of goods, but the most it will impact is workers. Because they're going to have to cover shifts and work that's being, that isn't being done by the people that are taking the time off. For the fraud, there's no other state that has faced this amount of fraud in the United States. This is the top issue that needs to be dealt with. Minnesota had six hundred and ten million dollars in the last six years of fraud that's been identified, and Health and Human Services is the largest area. It has a bipartisan vote to move legislation forward for additional protection for whistleblowers. Representative Gottfried was sworn in yesterday, so the House now has sixty-seven, sixty-seven. The gavel's going to alternate at each hearing between the Democrat and the Republican, and the Democrats will hold the first gavel. The Fraud Committee stays under GOP control. And then, oh, someone brought up, so Ramsey and Hennepin Counties are in a pilot program for the Minnesota African Child Welfare. Somebody suggested that they would have two to three rural counties also in a pilot program before this is implemented. I can't remember which county it was from, but whoever it was stated that he doesn't even think they have cases in their county to cover this. And so outstate needs to be looked at before all of this is put into place because some counties, it's going to be totally different than implementing down in the natural area. That's all I have. Oh, I did bring up, by the way, somebody, so there were counties that talked to him about the AIS. And so I suggested that since the DNR isn't receiving any cuts, and then I talked about how the tax capacity of the potential twenty-five to fifty million, you know, was, we, you know, discussed that. And brought up how a nonprofit could buy and then donate. So two things, I suggested that it be looked at at the state level about how counties are trying to manage their lands and when nonprofit take, get, donates to the DNR, how it's taken off the tax roll. But secondly, the DNR has money and they're not slated for any cuts. So I suggested that AIS would be funded out of the DNR and actually Representative Schultz had dealt with the DNR last year, and they do have excess funding. So he was going to take that as a consideration.
It's one of the things, topics that came up yesterday morning at the Mississippi Headwaters, one watershed, one plan meeting, and we had in Bemidji. And they talked about the funding that we're getting there if we could, because of the cuts to, the governor's recommending, you know.
Yeah, the potential cut, uh-huh.
Potential cuts, if we could use some of that funding for AIS. Bowser was kind of non-committal, not saying we could, not saying we couldn't, but we're going to check into that. Because then, you know, with all the one watershed plans going on now, and if there is funding available.
Yeah, there were several counties yesterday that said if this cut goes through, the counties can't fund.
Yeah.
The difference.
Or maybe some of one of these other government programs.
Yeah.
State programs, good to pick up the slack.
Yeah. So good discussion, we didn't vote on anything yesterday, it was strictly legislative updates.
Was there any update on trying to push back the implementation date for the time off?
For the safe and.
Yeah, for a safe and sick time?
Yes, but it's not being met well with the Democrat side of the party, and since with the makeup, you know, sixty-seven, sixty-seven, thirty-four, thirty-three. Yeah.
Be difficult.
However, he did, Representative Schultz did emphasize that people are starting to realize there is, there's just not enough money. And so he's hopeful that a bipartisan, a good bipartisan solution can be reached overall.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I attended the Hubbard County Township Association meeting last night and Ted was there. There wasn't anything significant, I guess, that that was brought up that wasn't addressed.
Maria spoke last night and Troy spoke last night. So, we kind of got double dip.
Yeah, we had two doses of it. So, that was good and I think it's good to keep everybody informed. There was just some general questions about some some issues that are happening, just the road construction things and that sort of thing. And then we had our ambulance service district meeting. Tom attended that one last week. So, we got basically have the have the ambulance service district up and running. We have a timeframe to move forward with and then hopefully submittals of proposals for the service district from providers. And then in May, we should look forward to announcing who was awarded the the contract. So, we'll move forward to that. And then we'll start working on a budget and everything else in the meantime with several other meetings between now and then. And that's that's all I had.
Mr. Chair, I forgot one thing and I actually asked Jeff to comment on this. This came up yesterday. We all received that email from NPR News about rental. So, actually, someone brought that up at MRC yesterday. None of the counties are responding nor nor do they, they don't even record data that way. And Jeff, if you want to address that just a little bit, please.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. The the short question that you all got is create a list of counties that inspect rental properties for cities. I talked with Eric about this. There, that's such a bad question. There's no way to answer it because it it doesn't, there's no authority that runs straight through the line of questioning that gets to the answer of that. They didn't specify if short term or long term rentals. They didn't identify if the counties are enforcing or not enforcing the the building code. There's a whole bunch of things in here. So, there's no way to answer that question, which is which is why counties aren't able to respond to that question. Anyway, just it's. Counties, our county attorney's office contracts with the city of Park Rapids to provide prosecution services, right? In those senses that that they would have that. But if they were going to do that, there would be agreements that the county board would approve to provide services to another municipal agency, right? So, as Eric and I had looked at this, there's there's not a standing authority for us to for any of us to do that. So, the answer to this question is I don't understand the question or no. There's no doubt in our support that that there's any relationships like that. So, it's it's and I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to clarify the question or if there was a what the what the reason behind the question was, but there is no good answer to that question.
I thought the same thing. I don't, I didn't, I got that email too and I was going to ask you about that. So, thank you, Sheriff, for bringing that up. I would assume, yeah, that we, on the on the surface, to me, they're asking if we inspect rental properties in cities and we don't.
In one sense, it feels like the question is hierarchically, is it the state, the county, and the city? And it's it's not, right? The cities have their authority from the from the state through their establishing statute. And the counties have a different authority and we don't have authority one over the other. So, the way the question is asked, it's it's not able to be answered. But the way it's asked, if you had to answer it, the answer would be we're not aware of any such relationships.
Tom, did you?
Well, Steve already covered the ambulance committee. In addition to that, I had Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging meeting yesterday. One of the things I did was provide a 20, 24-year review, which I can give a few numbers specific to Hubbard County. Conglomerate meals served, there were 288. Home deliveries, 121. Their senior linkage line, they had 355 calls there to that. And for that senior linkage line statewide, one of the things that people are calling about is Steve, and they can call that just to do a Medicare comparison, you know, come enrollment period. And they had saved clients $2.3 million in prescription drugs just comparing different plans. Yeah, it's good. Yeah, so it would benefit from that. And the conglomerate meals, that's going to be moving from Nevis to that building, that living at home building. Yeah, starting in July. So, that's where they'll be going for group meals. And that'll be a nice location because there's other things that happen over there, too.
There's a lot of things that happen there.
Yeah, so that'd be a good location for it. Those numbers will probably go up now after that. And that's about, those are the main highlights for the review. That's about all we have.
Okay. Thank you. Ted?
I had the Foston, the six-county incinerator meeting. Let's see. Recycling is up. Steam sales are up and the union contract was approved. And John from Polk County there was kind of pleased that they're only down one employee now. Problem is, it's a boiler operator. And they did talk with the union contract and everything, raising their pay and that because we've been losing them to Bemidji State University and Sanford Medical in Bemidji. And I guess it takes years to get a boiler's license. So, you've got to find somebody who's already got one. We're hoping to hire back one of those people that left because now with the increased wages and everything.
So, Ted, so I remember, you know, like Digit Key was one of the competition employers. So, are more people just applying and wanting to work local or did they up all the salaries?
They upped all the salaries.
Okay.
Let's see. As far as landfill tonnage and those kinds of things, we're pretty close to what we did last year. Recycling aluminum was up to $2,200 per ton. That's up towards one of the historical highs. Everything else is has been pretty much equal, not low, but not historical highs, but they've been good prices. Natural number two plastic is $1,000 a ton now. That's kind of high. Paper, it's only $35 a ton, but there was a time when we were having to pay to get rid of it. So, that was good. Going to have a stack test on April 21st. We normally perform well on those, but they shut down a little bit ahead of time to prepare for them. We're going to be applying for the five-year air permit. It usually takes six months to complete and get approval. So, we're doing that. They did a PFAS study. The results will be in a few weeks. Landfill permit expires in 2027. Usually takes about 10 years to get a permit. The application is due 8/26. We're waiting for approval to sell compost onsite or offsite, excuse me, since 2020. So, we totaled up, we figured we lost 179,000 plus in potential lost sales because we aren't allowed to sell compost offsite. That's MPCA, you know, the state of Minnesota, that sometimes they do stuff that doesn't make any sense. Let's see. So, some of it we've been using for cover. We usually use fines and stuff like that from the incinerator and from the the facility there. But like I say, since we have so much compost, we're using a little bit of that, too. And then the draft construction and demolition rules were supposed to be provided the first quarter of 2025. And now they're looking at, the state is now probably looking at somewhere in the second quarter of this year. We'll see. And of course, we're trying to see if they would suspend those or not implement those until they give us an alternative to what we can do. I mean, if it's going to take, like I say, 10 years to get a permit to do something and they're going to implement the plans and they want you to close some of these sites down within seven years, the timelines just don't line up. That's what I got for Foston. And then I also had the Mississippi River Headwaters, One Watershed, One Plan yesterday. It was well-attended. I think this is probably the most people we ever had at one of these meetings and so it was a good to see to see that turn on. You know, of course, some new commissioners, new SWCD employees, stuff like that. I guess the, one of the things I already talked about was the maybe trying to use some of the fundings for I, AIS, excuse me, funding. And then we talked about supporting natural shorelines. We talked, Bowser was there and they talked about some counties, I can't remember which county it was. It was a nominal thing where they, if you left your shoreline in over 75% natural habitat from at least 35 feet from the high water mark, they gave you a $50 discount on your property tax for that lake lot or lake home. Like I say, it was a nominal thing. But that county also reported that there was a lot of people that were just finding out this information and voluntarily doing it, not asking for anything in return. So, that's that's kind of good to see that people are understanding that lake shores need to be protected. And let's see. Went over some of the milestones. We do have, we still have some dollars left over from the 2022 allotment of dollars. Roughly 200,000 hasn't been spent, but Caitlin did go through the projects that are in line to be done this summer. And so, most of that $200,000 will be spent down with just those four projects that she brought up. And let's see. And then we got a brief update from all the member counties on what was being done in their counties. Hubbard County, Jake was there from SWCD. And trying to remember exactly what he discussed. Oh, some of the stuff that was being done on Lake Plantanginet. That's one of our, that's the only tier one lake we have in Hubbard County. In other words, they're usually looking at the bigger, more populated lakes in the in the One Watershed area. And in Hubbard County, Plantanginet was the only tier one. Everything else is tier two. And they've done a lot of the stuff with the tier one lakes and also they're starting to look at tier two lakes. And I believe that's all I've got. I guess I was at the Township Association meeting with with Steve last night. And Corey was there, of course, like I say, Maria and Troy were there last night, too.
And HRDC did give a presentation basically about what services they offer. That's the one thing I guess I didn't include. It's through not only economic transportation development, but the housing development as well. So, they they just explained what they offer as far as programs and and things. So, right, well, thank you. So, meetings to note, we have a department head meeting Tuesday, March 25th.
We'll be getting an update from Troy on emergency management planning.
And wasn't David going to do the manager's meeting?
I don't know.
We can check our notes. I think that sounds right.
I think so.
I guess Tom is going to be gone.
Yeah, he was in the last one.
That would that would work well. I would probably then schedule the general government meeting to happen right after that. We can have a review with the CLA, so.
Sure. Perfect. Again, we have the AMC Practical Leadership, April 9th, 10th, and 11th. That looks like it's all virtual. And we have the leadership training coming up at NISWA.
Next week.
25th, 26th, 27th, I believe.
Denise, I never got an email on that. You registered us, right? So, is it Ted, you're going?
Yep.
Okay. Are you staying or are you just?
No, I'm just going to carpool. I'm just going to drive back and forth.
Yeah, because it starts Wednesday at 1:00.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, from Wednesday, 1:00 to 4:30, and then all day Thursday, and then Friday, 9:00 to 11:30.
So, I get to sleep in Wednesday morning is what you're saying.
Sure, go for it.
Get a table front so they can call on you more often.
Even it's one way to stay alert, I guess. Then there was a making solid land use decisions in Staples at the end of April. I don't know if anyone from the board is planning on attending. It'd probably be more environmental services or the planning commission oriented.
So, would that be, would that training cover things? Probably not. Like our county, when we have a definite, you know, no net gain for land, would anything like that be covered at that training, do you think? Would that be a place to bring it up? Or do we just deal with that when we go to our committees down at AMC and MRC?
No net gain is going to be a legislative issue. This is going to be an administrative issue related more to county shoreline ordinances and enforcement and legal things. So, I don't, I don't think that.
Okay.
That that would be the venue.
Counties that have inclusive land use zoning, this would probably be extremely beneficial for them to, if they want to amend their ordinance or anything. So, I imagine Eric might be attending. But and I guess that is it. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Right. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
I.
Both?